A special town council session of Water Forum, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Silent roll calls, we're not doing that. It doesn't say anything about the Pledge of Allegiance, however, I think we ought to do that. Mr. Skippe, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I didn't put this together, therefore, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Roy A., who has been very instrumental in getting this going for us, so we can all figure out what's going on the Colorado River and what kind of dire situation we're in. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, and welcome to the town of Cave Creek's Water Forum. It's really so nice to see all of you here, including our neighbors from Carefree, the mayor, John Crane, and members of his council. Welcome. This forum is being held because the main source of surface water supplies for both Cave Creek and Desert Hills is from the Colorado River, which isn't a prolonged drought. Cave Creek's allocation of Colorado River water is delivered to us by Central Arizona Project, which, you should know, is my former employer. I was the Communications Associate General Manager for 20 years. And when I retired in 2016, I decided to commit myself to public service in 2018, and that's when I was first elected. Last month, the United States Secretary of the Interior declared its first-ever Tier 1 shortage on the river, which has resulted in substantial cuts to Arizona's water allocations. This year, Arizona's agricultural users will feel the impact. If a Tier 2 shortage is declared in 2023, which is currently projected, Arizona cities, towns, industries, and Indian tribes will be affected. Today's Water Forum is an opportunity for us to hear directly from the sources responsible for protecting, managing, and delivering our surface as well as groundwater supplies. The Arizona Department of Water Resources and Central Arizona Project are both here. We'll also hear from those who expertly manage Cave Creek's water utilities. We are hearing timely facts and information from some of the most knowledgeable people in the water industry in Arizona. This forum is scheduled to last two hours. We have three segments of 40 minutes apiece, 20 minutes scheduled for presentations, and 20 minutes scheduled for questions. I am timing everybody, and you will hear a beep after your 20 minutes are up. For those of you who have questions, we have agendas, and we have forms on this table over here, as well as some treats for you to fill out if you have questions. You should note on the question form which agenda item you wish to speak on, your name and address, and then hand it to our town clerk, Teresa Riza, who is sitting over here to the far right in a black shirt. Your comments are limited to three minutes, and you will also hear a beep once you hit that mark. I'd like to begin the forum by introducing Kristin Johnson from the State Department of Water Resources. I have her bio here. Kristin Johnson, Juris Doctor, has been the Colorado River Programs Manager at the Arizona Department of Water Resources since 2021. In this role, she collaborates in developing and analyzing a myriad of potential negotiating scenarios for the forthcoming renegotiation of the 2007 interim guidelines for the operation of the Colorado River, as well as tribal water rights settlements. Ms. Johnson manages staff conducting technical analyses and modeling exercises, environmental compliance, and water contract transfers within the state of Arizona. Prior to bringing her expertise to the state of Arizona, Kristin was a government affairs specialist at the Coachella Valley Water District in Palm Desert, California, and Attorney Advisor for the United States Department of the Interior's Bureau of Reclamation. In addition to the Colorado River, she has been directly involved in issues affecting the Klamath, Missouri, Columbia, and Republican River Basins. Kristin Johnson earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in anthropology from Washington University in St. Louis, and a Juris Doctor from Southern Illinois University School of Law in Carbondale, Illinois. Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you, Catherine. I hope everyone can hear me, and I'm very happy to be here on behalf, no, more, closer. Okay, there we go. On behalf, I'm very happy to be here on behalf of the Department of Water Resources. So I don't want to waste any of my 20 minutes, although my secret strategy to avoid those challenging questions was to actually go over my 20 minutes, but it doesn't sound like I'll be allowed to do that. So let's just jump right into it. So this is a general picture of Arizona's water use and its population growth over the past several decades. You can see that our population growth has increased, while our water use has actually managed to decline and has finally steadied out. However, if you remember one thing from this presentation, it's that the sum total of everything that ADWR does is reflected in this one slide. And another thing that I do want to point out, keep in mind that in water, we measure water in terms of acre feet. So you're going to hear me talking about acre feet, not gallons, right? An acre foot is 325,851 gallons. Just keep in mind, 325,000 gallons. That is about the equivalent of the amount of water it takes to support two to three average families for one year. Okay, so that just gives you a general idea of what an acre foot can do. And we're going to move quickly through some of these. Here is just some general information about Arizona's water use by source. You can see the Colorado River does represent 36% of the state's water portfolio. And then we look at the same data by sector. So agricultural use making up the large portion of how Arizonans use water. So I want to give you a little bit of general background and sort of structure on the Department of Water Resources before I move more into talking about actual Colorado River. The Arizona Department of Water Resources was established when the Groundwater Management Act was enacted in 1980. The Act not only established the department, but it also established five active management areas. And the goals of those Groundwater Management Act and the AMAs is to regulate groundwater for areas in the state in which 80% of the population resides. So again, there are five AMAs or active management areas, and those AMAs cover 80% of Arizona's population. Each AMA is required to have management plans that outline progressively more rigorous management requirements for agricultural, municipal, and industrial water users. The Groundwater Management Act also established the Assured Water Supply Program for the state, and the Assured Water Supply Program operates within those five AMAs. And we're going to move on. So these are those five active management areas that I described. There are also three INAs, which stands for Irrigation Nonexpansion Areas. And if you're following the news these days, there is discussion of two additional AMAs being established. Those are set for popular election. Those are already on the ballot, and one would be in Douglas, and I believe one is in Wilcox. So what's the regulatory structure of the Department of Water Resources? We have a tiered regulatory structure. The slide's not comprehensive, but it should give you a general idea of sort of how the department regulates water within the state. So again, there are some requirements that do apply to the entirety of Arizona, such as registration of all new wells. There are some requirements that apply only to INAs or irrigation non-expansion areas, and then there are some requirements that apply strictly to those AMAs. So as I touched on before, the AMAs have management plans that contain conservation programs and regulatory requirements and effective dates for each of those AMAs. Currently authorized by statute, there are five management plans. We are currently in the implementation period for the fourth management plan. And the department is working on promulgating the fifth management plan. There has been a planned focused work group called the Management Plan Work Group, clever name, that has worked with stakeholders around the state to develop those fifth management plans for each of the AMAs, right? So each AMA has its own management plan. All fifth management plans have been drafted. The structure is largely matching the current management plans. However, there is time, or there has been time for customization. And one more try? No, there we go. Oh, and I went too far. Okay. So the fifth management plans are currently in draft form, and they have been presented, I believe all five have been presented to the public in the five active management areas by our staff at DWR. Major changes in structure and content from the fourth management plan to the fifth include a shift to move data online, so that we have increased transparency and an ability to continue with ongoing updates, and added executive summary to each of those five management plans. They've been streamlined. There's also added engagement information for stakeholder engagement with the department. Some major changes have occurred to the recharge program. Let's see, where else have there been major changes? I know for a fact, one of the major changes included for golf courses, overhauled the allotment calculation method to better reflect actual practices and recent consumptive use analysis. So certainly, we see from a press perspective, right, golf courses get a lot of pressure to try to be more efficient, or a lot of folks in the media ask, you know, if we need to cut our water use, why do we continue to water golf courses? So golf courses are definitely part of the consideration, part of the equation in the fifth management plan. And then I want to talk very briefly about the Assured and Adequate Water Supply Program. We consider this, the department considers this basically the state's insurance policy. So in those AMA areas, anyone who is coming in to do a new development has to prove a physical availability of water for 100 years. That physical availability has to also be continuously available and legally available, and those are three separate requirements that have to all be met in order to receive a certificate of assured and adequate water supply. There have been some discussions in the state legislature about reducing that time period from 100 years down to, I've heard 50, I've heard as low as 30. I can tell you that the department is not in favor of such an amendment, and again, we view that as your insurance policy as water users in the state of Arizona. Okay, so now we can start talking about things that I know more about, because I am the Colorado River Programs Manager. So to get us acquainted sort of with where we're at, I just thought I'd present a very brief overview of the basin. So we've got a basin map. It covers seven western states, supplies water to 40 million people, 29 federally recognized tribes, 22 of which are within the state of Arizona. We have about 5 million acres of irrigated farmland across the basin, and we generate clean hydropower for the Western Power Grid, both at Glen Canyon Dam and at Hoover Dam. And then I will certainly let my CAP colleagues talk a little bit more about their own infrastructure, but just so we can get us, again, a picture of where we're talking about, the Central Arizona Project does take water off of the main stem Colorado River for delivery through the central part of Arizona. Okay, so as Catherine mentioned, in the year 2022, we've been operating in the first-ever declared shortage on the Colorado River. We've been in a Tier 1 shortage. And on August 16th, just last month, the Bureau of Reclamation, who is responsible for managing the Colorado River, announced that in 2023, we will be operating in a Tier 2A shortage. So what that means is Arizona will go from a reduction in its supply of 512,000 acre feet, and our reduction will increase to 592,000 acre feet. And that is a mandatory reduction under two agreements and two operating laws that we're currently operating under, known as the 2007 Guidelines and the Drought Contingency Plan. Otherwise, we call it the DCP. Probably heard a lot about that in about 2018. It was enacted in 2019. So if you look, I don't think I have a laser pointer on here, but that's okay. So that's all right. So if we look at the DCP water savings contributions, it's kind of this chunk of columns right in the middle, right? And we go down, and we see Arizona. When we get to a Tier 2B, our contribution stays at 240,000 acre feet. We'll go over to the red column. Look at California. In a Tier 2A, California is still contributing zero water. And that is, thank you, by virtue of, again, those agreements. These agreements have been in place. They are longstanding. However, as we move further into shortage, Arizona does take incremental reductions to its water supply. However, I just want to underscore that currently in 2023, Arizona, or rather, California, excuse me, is not scheduled to take any reductions to its water supply. Okay. So these are projections that the Bureau of Reclamation produces every month. These are known as the 24-month studies, because they project ahead for 24 months. Another very clever name here. So these charts and graphs were presented on August 16th, when Reclamation announced the Tier 2A shortage. We are currently looking at the projections for Lake Powell, and some of those horizontal lines represent what we call critical elevations, elevations in the reservoir that we really don't want to dip below. That bottom dashed line represents the minimum power pool at Glen Canyon Dam. If we fall below that, that power facility is no longer generating. So it's pretty critical that we keep an eye on projections and where the reservoir levels are falling, because not only do we not want to fall below that for power purposes, but in a couple of slides, I will explain that it also would impact Arizona's water delivery. But again, first, let's focus on this. So the red, green, and blue dashed lines represent a minimum probable, a most probable, and a max probable. Generally, we focus on the most probable, which is the green dashed line, okay? And you can see that, you know, as we're sort of closer in on, you know, end of '22, beginning of '23, we have a generally good idea of where we think we're going to be. The projections are pretty good, right? But as we move further out in that projection period, naturally, we just have a little bit more unknowns. The hydrologic record, the traces, the models, you can see there's a wide band of variability there, and that just has to do with the nature of modeling. And I'm sure Ken could probably correct me, because he deals in the modeling space a lot more than I do. So again, this is Lake Powell. Now let's look at Lake Mead, right? Lake Mead is where Arizona primarily receives its water from, comes out from Hoover Dam. You're going to see a lot narrower band of probability here, and that is because we are much less reliant on hydrology, whereas Lake Powell is entirely reliant on inflows and hydrology and snowmelt. Lake Powell is more reliant on the releases from, or I'm sorry, Lake Mead is more reliant on the releases from Lake Powell. I see a questioning look over here, so I hope you're following me. But again, you see that narrower band of probability. But we are also looking at some really scary numbers here. Look at that elevation potentially falling, you know, below 1,000 feet at Lake Mead, potentially by July of, actually falling below 1,000 at, what's that look like, April of 2024? For those of you keeping track, the minimum power pool at Lake Mead is elevation 950. So 1,000 is not far off from that. And Deadpool at Lake Mead is elevation 895, meaning once we hit Deadpool, means once you hit that elevation, you can no longer get water past the reservoir, or past the dam. So I talked really briefly about, not only is protecting Glen Canyon Dam important for hydropower, it's important for water delivery. And I'm going to explain why here in a second. You can see the orange lines on the cross-section. Those represent pen stocks. The blue dashed line represents river outlet works. The pen stocks are what actually produce the hydropower. There are eight of those. If we fall below 3490 and are no longer able to move water through the pen stocks, the only way that we can move water past Glen Canyon Dam is to use the river outlet works or the bypass tubes. There's only four of those. Okay, so just by math, we're losing volume and the ability to move water past Glen Canyon Dam. Now bear with me, this looks complicated, but I'm going to help you through it. This also explains why, if we had to become wholly reliant on those four river outlet works, we're going to be potentially in trouble very quickly, right? The lower basin, by virtue of the Colorado River Compact, is entitled to receive 7.5 million acre feet past Lake Mead annually. Now, if you look at the lower axis, the horizontal axis, if you go down in elevation, okay, you're going to see that as you lose head and as you lose pressure, you're losing the ability to move the water through those pen stocks. And then let's just say, for some horrible reason, for maintenance, or maybe there's even a catastrophic failure, we have to take one of those, maybe two of those bypass tubes out of operation. Suddenly, look how much water delivery capacity we're losing. So these curves were built on the assumption of operating 365 days, 24/7. And I'm not a structural engineer, but even I know that that's practically impossible. So have I depressed you enough yet? Okay. These slides, or rather, these graphs, I want you to focus on particularly the orange line. Okay, we have Lake Powell on the left, we have Lake Mead on the right. Both of these scenarios were modeled by the Bureau of Reclamation, looking at various hydrologies. And notice, particularly on the teal line, that future does not look very good for the elevations of either of those reservoirs. The orange line, you say, wow, that looks pretty okay. There's a nice wet year in 2024. They modeled 123% of average inflow. We get a nice bump up, and then what happens? We still continue to decline. We have depleted our savings accounts in both of those reservoirs. And I am here to tell you and to underscore that one good wet year is not going to save the system. And we need to stop thinking in terms of, well, wait, maybe next year's going to be a wet year, and it's going to be okay. We have a long way to go to recover the system, and that's what I want you to take away from this slide. Okay, so with that, I'm going to switch very quickly to an action that was just recently taken at the end of this legislative session. The governor enacted Senate Bill 1740, which allocates $1 billion for Arizona's water future. It basically amps up the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority and provides new responsibilities to provide loans and grants to water providers and entities for the purposes of importing water into the state, conservation, efficiency and reuse, and new technology. And with that, oh, look at that, my timer is about to go off, and I'm on my last slide. Okay.
You were right on the money. All right. I don't know if we have any questions that were pre-written. I don't think we do. But would anybody like to ask Kristin some questions? Yes, please come to the microphone, sir.
Yeah. That is an excellent question. By and large, as I understand it, probably the most likely source would be a D-SAL partnership and exchange. ADWR, CAP, Southern Nevada Water Authority, and the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California are currently in an agreement to explore expanded D-SAL opportunities. And if I get this wrong, Ken can like chuck something at me. But at this point, right, if the way that it would work, there would be a D-SAL plant, potentially either on the California coast or somewhere in Mexico, and then there would be an exchange. So instead of Mexico or California taking its delivery of Colorado River water, it would use that D-SAL water, and then Arizona or Southern Nevada Water Authority would basically take that share of the Colorado River water. So that is the primary source of where, I will use air quotes, new water can come from. I'll just cut off sort of the possibility of anyone asking me about a pipeline. It is, it's a nice idea, and Reclamation did complete a feasibility study several years ago. They determined it to be infeasible from engineering and cost perspective. And yes, we have gas pipelines, and yes, we have oil pipelines. And I will tell you, the difference is, water is very heavy, okay? A gallon of water weighs about eight pounds. And so to have the infrastructure, right, I'm sure CAP can talk about that, but to have the infrastructure to move the volume of water, plus the pumping energy required to move it across, you know, the continental divide, plus other mountain ranges, if we're talking about something, say, like the Mississippi River, the costs are just astronomical. So certainly, we have great inroads to make in terms of ag efficiency. Municipal efficiency can certainly continue to play its part, and new D-SAL water is also going to be, I think, very attractive. However, when you think about, you know, building infrastructure and the technology for D-SAL, it's going to be expensive, and folks will need to get used to seeing a very increased water utility bill. And it's also going to be at least 10 years down the road. So in the interim, right, when we're looking at these kinds of projections, we still need to be conservative. Yes?
When you answer the question about the cost, which I was told yesterday was something like 10x D-SAL solidization. Expensive, right? In a presume that we increase dollars with them to Arizona, but the real question I have is the recharge of those acres. How long would it take, the estimation of the exports, to get back to the levels of heat in terms of years of burn time?
So for folks who didn't hear the question, and maybe folks online who didn't hear the question, the question was how long? the question was how long is the estimate to take to recharge our savings accounts behind those dams? How long to get the reservoirs back into good shape? Did I get that?
Yes.
Okay. This is an educated guess because I personally have not modeled it. I haven't seen any modeling, maybe Ken has a better answer. I keep, you know, my phone a friend over here. You know, just, I had said at 1.5 years, someone else had said 10. I feel free to jump in here.
So I guess I'm going to give the dreaded planner's answer, which is it depends.
Yes.
But, but the things that it depends on, first of all, obviously, natural hydrology, we could get into a wetter phase. But the immediate issues we're facing is these kinds of, the magnitude of reductions. For most of you are aware, the Assistant Secretary and the Commissioner for the Bureau of Reclamation has estimated we need 2 to 4 million acre foot in reduction in demands to be able to get to a more stable near-term situation. That's about reducing demands and that's what's in our control. We obviously don't control the hydrology. The modeling shows that a single year is not enough of really high runoff is not enough. A few good years could get us to a bit healthier position. But the longer term issue is over allocation. We are facing longer term, drier hydrology associated with climate change. So we're facing, right in front of us, how do we, can we get our supply and demand closer into balance? Large reductions necessary beyond the kinds of things that have been negotiated. And then keeping many of those in place over a longer period of time. Many of the things that Kristen just mentioned, augmentation, but also demand reductions, efficiency. Much of that's going to be in agriculture because that's where the water is being primarily used, but certainly municipal demand reductions as well. So it's a combination. Timing and hydrology, we don't have a lot of controls, any control of hydrology. But the conversations that are happening among the seven basin states and the Republic of Mexico are about how to share the pain of further reductions. And I heard a question whispered that I'm going to add because it was an obvious question. How come California is not taking any? Not to jump in, in place, but in 1968, state of Arizona, in order to get congressional appropriation for the Central Arizona Project, had to agree under duress, no question, to get California congressional delegation on board to have the CAP be junior to almost all other users in the Colorado River basin. We got a, we got a beautiful piece of infrastructure that's done lots of great benefit for the state. But we did have to agree to that. There were other conditions around that, but.
I'll, I'll add to your answer, Ken. When you start to talk about shortages on the Colorado River, you get to a point where you're getting into the 1921 compact, 22 compact. And that was a negotiation among the basin states that allocated water that hadn't really been allocated yet. But there were already users, old users, and according to Western Water Law, the people who were already there, already using were kind of grandfathered in that compact. And California's users are almost all that old. So they have the most senior water rights when you look just at who was using in history. And so if people get cut, they're the last ones to get cut under Western Water Law. And that's sort of reflected a little bit in the compact. So that's why they're not taking cuts until later, under, under Western Water Law. Other questions? Let's take Steve.
To mitigating agriculture or to lowering use? Okay. Yep. Yep. Yep, so for folks online, the question is for ag use and for imposing reductions on ag use, sort of what mechanism would likely be used to do that? Whereas for a municipality, you can, you know, pass a ordinance or a, you know, municipal regulation. So that was a lovely segue. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about a letter that was sent from the Southern Nevada Water Authority General Manager on August 15th. So General Manager's name is John Anslinger. Each state, each of the seven basin states has one representative who is appointed by the governor. And those are the governor's representatives, these classic names, right? Where do they come up with them? John is Nevada's representative for the basin states negotiations. And John sort of beat the news cycle for the August 24 month study. Ken referenced these calls from the Department of the Interior to find an additional 2 to 4 million acre feet of conservation. And the news media leading up to the August 24 month study was, you know, sort of building up this story of, well, you know, if the states don't come to an agreement, what is interior going to do? Because in June, the Commissioner of the Bureau of Reclamation had testified before the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee about needing this additional volume of water. And Senator Kelly asked her very pointedly with regard to the junior priority for the Central Arizona Project. I forget exactly what the question was, but you know, Senator Kelly asked the Commissioner, you know, are you willing to impose cuts outside of the priority system? And the Commissioner responded, yes, we will protect the system. And so this sort of laid the foundation for a lot of speculation in the media. What's, what's, what are the feds going to do? And two things happened, three things really happened on August 16th. A, Interior announced a tier two A shortage, which we've already talked about. B, it became very apparent that the basin states were unable to negotiate a deal among themselves to come up with 2 to 4 million acre feet. And C, the federal government also came up with no plan of its own to reduce use by 2 to 4 million acre feet. And so a lot of folks were disappointed to see that. Some of the news media was a little more pointed and I'm, I'm getting to the question, I promise I am. And so like I said, SNWA, Southern Nevada Water Authority, sent a letter to the Department of, of the Interior with 13 points that they have asked the department to consider. Several weeks later, Director Bouchowski from ADWR, our director, sent a follow-up letter endorsing that SNWA letter. And primarily what is being endorsed from Arizona and Nevada's perspective is to impose evaporative and system losses on the lower basin. Currently, upper basin water users do take evaporative and system losses, but the lower basin does not. So if Arizona is by virtue of the compact supposed to get 2.8 million acre feet delivered to it, we get 2.8 million acre feet delivered, not 2.8 minus whatever evaporates in the canal along the way or whatever, like might seep right along the way through the river. So that's number one, imposing evaporation and system losses. It is going to be a tough pill to swallow for a lot of folks because it means you take what you are currently using and what you are currently diverting and you have to cut it, right? Because you have to account for those evaporative losses. Item number two that was outlined in that letter that ADWR has endorsed is for reclamation to use some existing authorities or potentially look for new authorities if required, right? If it needs new legislation from the Congress, let's, let's examine that. But hopefully using existing authorities to look at a new definition of beneficial use. And Michelle could give us a whole, you know, treatise on, on what beneficial use means in terms of Western Water. But basically sort of the question, and I of course would never say anything that Director Bouchowski hasn't already said in public, right? But looking at what kinds of crops are being grown in arid regions. And I'll leave it at that.
Other questions?
I'd, I'd like to add to that just quickly too. I'm Alexandra Arbelita, I serve on the Central Arizona Water Conservation District Board of Directors. And I think that was a great question. And because agriculture uses in the vicinity of 70% of the water, definitely that's somewhere that we need to look and we need to work on increased efficiencies and, and how we can reduce that water use. So just two things to add. One is not all agriculture is the same. So within that 70%, we have a lot of different users with a lot of different types of, of rights. And so, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about the Central Arizona Project specifically in this picture. But our agricultural users this year, 2022, their CAP supply was cut by 65%. And then in 2023, their CAP supply will be cut by 100%. And that is because of the, we manage based on a priority system. And the ag pool, we call it, is the lowest priority on the CAP system. There are some mitigation and things like that I will get into later. But so agriculture in central and southern Arizona is going to be very significantly and is currently significantly impacted by these reductions. They, they do still have some access to groundwater supplies and grandfathered groundwater rights. So they will be using some groundwater, but, but it's going to reduce production, it will, they'll be following land and we will, we will see that impact. If you look at the agricultural users along the Colorado River, so primarily in the Yuma area, they have some of the highest priority rights. And as Michelle mentioned, the, the prior appropriation doctrine, first in time, first in right, is, is kind of state Western Water Law. Interstate international streams are sometimes a little bit different. You look at equitable apportionment, but primarily we look at this priority system and the agricultural users along the Colorado River have very senior rights. And CAP has the junior right. So that's why we're in this negotiation to try and, and figure out what we can do. The system losses and evaporation is something I think a lot of Arizona, Nevada, a lot of us agree that would be an important first step to get everybody to equitably share in those. We lose about 1.2 million acre feet just in evaporation from Lake Powell, Lake, Lake Mead. So it's a big number. And, and so then the second thing I just want to add is N-Drip is something that CAP has been doing some pilot studies. It, what it is, is a technology that it came out of Israel where I believe 80% of their agriculture is, use, uses drip technology. And it's a gravity flow drip irrigation system. We've been looking at it, working with some farms along the Colorado River and in the West Valley here, looking to see if we can, if, if that technology is implemented, can we produce the same or more amount of crops with less water? And how much does it all cost? How does it work? We're still at the pilot stage, but and, and there's kind of variable results. So it works pretty well with some crops, not as well with other crops. It works well with some soils, not, not as well with others. But, and then there's been some iterations of the technology to improve it. But, and, and Ken may be able to talk about it more, but it's definitely something that we are putting resources behind. We think it's important to be able to work with agriculture so we can continue to grow crops and have food security and produce the winter vegetables in Yuma that we all enjoy in our salads and at the same time reduce our use of water.
Thank you very much. We have quite, we have time for one last question. I'm going to call him.
That in particular, we're partnering, oh yeah, so our other states looking at these technologies and in the, N-Drip in particular. The pilot study that we're doing, we're doing in collaboration with Southern Nevada Water Authority, Metropolitan Water District and some other entities as well. And we're partnering with University of Arizona to kind of look at the, do the research and evaluate the results. And a lot of states, because agriculture throughout the West uses a big percentage of the water to grow our food, a lot of other states are also looking at ways that we can work with agriculture to, to reduce, produce the same amount of crops with less water. So yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. That concludes the first portion of our agenda tonight. Thank you, Kristen Johnson from ADWR. Coming up next, you've already heard from them, from Central Arizona Project, but I, I would like to read their bios to you. I did include the biographies and their LinkedIn email addresses. If you care to write to any of these guest speakers on LinkedIn. Oh.
Your time's up.
My time's up, right? Yikes. Okay, all right. Sorry, everybody. There. Alexandra Arbelita is an attorney and an elected official since 2016, currently serving as the Secretary of the Board of Directors of the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, which oversees the Central Arizona Project Water Management and Delivery System for our state's Colorado River allocation, serving 5 million people in Arizona. Ms. Arbelita is also a Commissioner on the Arizona Water Banking Authority, which firms water supplies for underground storage. Alexandra practices law at TSL Law Group in Scottsdale, where she focuses on water and natural resources, representing a variety of clients, including cities and towns, irrigation districts, farmers, ranchers, real estate developers and golf courses. Alexandra Arbelita earned her Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Stanford University and her Juris Doctorate from the University of Arizona's James E. Rogers College of Law in Tucson. Welcome Alexandra.
Thank you. Well, it's, it's really a pleasure to be here and thank you all for coming out tonight. This is such an important issue. And I find whenever I speak to groups that people are really engaged and really want to understand water better and, but it's also very technical and complex. And so fortunately you have here some great minds on this and, and I'm, I'm really honored to be here. So I will, I'm going to talk about Central Arizona Project. And, and Ken, Seasholes and I are going to do a presentation together. So I'm going to start, he's going to take over in the middle and then I'll finish it up. So Central Arizona Project, I think, you know, we touched on this, Kristen touched on this earlier, but it's basically a 336 mile long aqueduct that carries water from Lake Havasu to south of Tucson. And the important thing to understand is that it has to push that water up 3,000 feet. So it's an initial 1,500 feet and then there's 14 pumping plants and 10 siphons, four tunnels. It's pretty much just an engineering marvel that we've been able to do this. Lake Pleasant is our main store. Lake Pleasant is our main storage reservoir on the system. And that's created by New Waddell Dam. There's Waddell Pump Generating Plant there as well. And deliveries began in nineteen eighty-five, as Ken mentioned. The CAP was authorized in nineteen sixty-eight, but it took until nineteen eighty-five to begin deliveries. And then the construction was complete in nineteen ninety-three. And the service area, our service area is three counties, Maricopa, Pinal, and Pima Counties. We're about twenty-four thousand square miles. We get less than eight inches of annual rainfall on average. We've had some nice rain recently. I'm always so happy about that. But pretty low rainfall and about five million people live in our service area, which is about eighty percent of our population. Water usage for 2022, this slide has really changed. So currently about sixty-one percent of our CAP water is used by municipal and industrial subcontractors. Thirty-five percent is used by Indian tribes and four percent by agriculture. In prior years, the agriculture was a higher number, but as I said, under the reductions, they were cut by about sixty-five percent. So four percent left there. CAP's economic impact. So Carl Hayden, you know, his family had a farm down near Tempe. And in the early nineteen hundreds, had this dream of bringing water into central Arizona from the Colorado River. It took his entire lifetime to see that happen. So we call it the Hayden Roads Aqueduct because they were, senators were very involved in getting this done. What did it bring to the valley? The economic impact is huge. So this study, I believe, was done in twenty nineteen and it's contributed about $2 trillion to our economy. That's about a hundred billion per year, forty percent of our gross state product. And it's created about 1.6 million jobs. CAWCD Governance, that's me and how I fit in. So we have a fifteen-member elected board. We serve six-year terms because this is all very complicated to learn. And so, you know, by the time you understand it, you've probably been on the board six years. We have staggered elections. Every two years, five seats are on the general ballot. It's a nonpartisan election. And we have ten members representing Maricopa County, one representing Pinal County and four representing Pima County. And that's really based on population. And there's weighted voting. Oh yes, and the slide says unpaid. So we all do this as a public service. So what are CAP's roles and responsibilities? Some of our roles and responsibilities include subcontracting with water users, repaying the United States for construction costs. We're still repaying, operating and maintaining the CAP system, owning and operating recharge projects, providing groundwater replenishment services, and recovering water for the Arizona Water Banking Authority. As I mentioned, so I'm the Chair of the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District and Underground Storage Committee. CAGR D was created in the mid nineteen nineties to help water providers and landowners comply with Arizona's groundwater laws. So you heard about in Kristin's presentation, the Assured Water Supply Program. You have to prove that you have a hundred-year supply of water to build a development. And so the CAGR D is a way to allow developers and cities, water providers, to comply with the groundwater laws and the conservation requirements. CAGR D plays an important role in central Arizona's groundwater management by replenishing groundwater that is pumped by its members. So replenishing that water into the aquifers. What is CAGR D's relationship to CAP? It's not a separate entity. It's a special function of CAP. It's governed by the CAWCD Board of Directors and serves members in Maricopa, Pima, and Pinal Counties. And but it has a separate funding mechanism. So it's funded solely by its members. So what is CAGR D's relationship to the Assured Water Supply Program? Basically, all CAGR D members must demonstrate to DWR that they have a hundred-year physical supply, which can include groundwater. And the GRD replenishes groundwater pumped by members to comply with the management goal of each AMA. And in the Phoenix and Tucson AMAs, that goal is safe yield. Okay, here is where I'm going to hand things over to Ken Seasholes. And he's going to go into a little more detail on the shortage and tell you all about that.
Okay, but I need to interject real quick.
Sure.
Because I think it's really important for all of us to understand the background and the expertise of these people who are before us tonight. Ken Seasholes is the Manager of Resource Planning and Analysis at CAP. Ken and his planning team develop, analyze, and recommend policies regarding wheeling of non-project water, Arizona's Groundwater Management Act, and Assured Water Supply Rules, the Arizona Water Banking Authority, recovery of underground storage credits, and general Arizona water policy. Mr. Seasholes and his team conduct special studies and analysis of long-term water supplies, water supply availability, water supply acquisition, and support other departments on budget, strategic, and business planning. Prior to joining CAP, Ken was the Tucson Area Director for the Arizona Department of Water Resources. Ken earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science and Government from the University of Colorado Boulder and his Master's Degree in Geography from the University of Arizona in Tucson. Thank you, Ken.
Great. And thank you for inviting me here and we'll touch on lots of the topics. I was going to mention that one of the other attributes of the water community, in addition to lots of complexity, we really like acronyms. So it's a little dense. But obviously, one of the critical issues we are facing, we are in a declared shortage this year. We're facing declared shortage for next year. And as I mentioned earlier, there's no question that we need to do more to come into balance with the Colorado River system. I'm going to start with this slide. It's very busy in a way. It's a nice one just for reference. And pull it back up, but this is, this is kind of bringing together a little bit of a schematic of Lake Mead. And as was Kristin mentioned earlier, Lake Mead is the reservoir that we deliver to the lower basin and where our Colorado River supply comes from. And we are clearly in the lower portions of the reservoir. And it's below that second tier trigger for 2023. Again, some of the same kind of statistics on the right in terms of how our water supply is being used and both for the agricultural dedicated supply for agriculture and the supplies we've used in the past for storage underground. Those supplies are the first to go. But I'll talk more specifically about that aspect because we've mentioned several times in a couple of different contexts, priority. And Michelle made a great reference to priority dates. But the takeaway I want to leave you with is that within the CAP system itself, within the supply that's available to CAP, there's priority within that as well. So we have junior priority relative to most other Colorado River users. And then within the CAP system, there are additional priorities. And we have this, we refer this chart as our block chart. This is a kind of a chart where you want to be on the bottom. So we have a little slice there that says P3, that's a small portion that's very high priority. But these other supplies going up are less and less, are more subject to shortage, the first to take some of those reductions. The, these names are a little bit anachronistic and they're a little bit hard to decipher in some ways. And they don't necessarily reflect how some of the water supplies are being used and more about how the supply is being allocated. So it says Indian priority, there's higher priority supplies within the CAP system that are allocated to a number of tribal communities in Arizona. Some of that's used by the tribes themselves for agriculture and some is leased to the cities. MNI, that's the largest portion of the municipal supply. K Creek has a portion of its largest CAP supply is in that lighter blue portion. And then there's that orange block that says NIA that refers to the way it was previously used. You just now have had an additional supply of that priority added to the CAP portfolio. You will notice though that it's higher in this block chart. That means it's less reliable, meaning it's going to get cut earlier than these other supplies. So again, we've mentioned several times now that we are facing a Tier 2A reduction in 2023. And this is mentioned earlier, that's a 592,000 acre foot reduction. I don't know, we come up with a lot of numbers on these things, there's a reason for that. But the impact of that is that that's a reduction starting at the lowest priority and coming down. And it happens to land right at that intersection between NIA priority and these higher priority pools. That means that that kind of reduction, the main supply that's available to this community and Michelle and Sean will talk more detail about those supplies. But those are protected, but that NIA supply, that newly allocated smaller portion under Tier 2A is gone. Which is definitely a concern. Kristin also mentioned one of the other acronyms, DCP. There is the drought reductions, part of that 592 is part of these negotiations. And in order to kind of have a bit of a blunting of the impacts of shortage, there were negotiations to say, well, particularly starting actually with some of the agricultural water, that little bit that's still available in 2022 is called mitigation. And there's complicated agreements, money, it's previously stored water, it's water that we've stored in Lake Mead for additional release. But to try to have the immediate impacts of those reductions blunted a bit. And for 2023, three quarters of that NIA supply, that lower priority supply under Tier 2A is restored. That's good, but that's temporary. And as you may remember, not so long ago, I just said we're still facing this really large reduction. So this is still looking like the most optimistic outcome for 2023. And it's highly unlikely that we will be so fortunate for 2024. Really, it's, we're kind of headed into deeper shortage almost invariably. But this is a picture for this upcoming year. And taking advantage of those supplies, managing them to the best of our abilities. So in addition to priority, so the intent of those priorities really is to try to insulate some of those highest value uses, not that all uses are important, but supplying water to municipal and industrial uses and some of those tribal users is really, really where most of that economic benefit comes from and we want to protect it. So the priority system itself provides some protection. But there are additional kind of strategies, lots of them. And I'm going to hit just briefly on three additional strategies. Kristin mentioned this and it's really much more in the regulatory realm. But really, you can't emphasize enough, and conservation, and that means in all sectors, is really the starting point for many of our, how to manage water supplies. And we do live in an arid state. We think about this stuff all the time. Arizona is actually pretty progressive in terms of having longstanding regulations and tools to do conservation, particularly in these active management areas. And this map shows the overlap between those, our three county service area and those three central AMAs. Maricopa, Pima, and Pinal Counties, the Phoenix, Pinal, and Tucson Active Management Area. So those two things, our two agencies are tightly linked, both historically and in how we manage some of those resources. One of the most undertold stories, in my opinion, and it actually goes all the way back to that first slide that Kristin showed about, well, how is it that we could grow hugely in population and in economic value and still use the same or less water than we were using decades ago? Much of that is transition and some improvements in agricultural efficiency, but also in the municipal sector. So the overall per person usage in, this is in all three counties in central Arizona, has been on a steady downward trajectory. And a lot of that's happened kind of invisibly. Low-flow toilets, improved efficiency in irrigation, but choices by people as well. This is a really impressive thing. This is a big part of how we've been able to both grow and use the resources we have available. It is also true that every water provider, whether that's a town, a city, or a private utility, has to have a drought response plan. You've seen in the newspaper and other places that there are these being triggered. And I'm sure some more about that here in the later part of the presentation. But those are anticipation, different trigger levels of whether it's voluntary things and some of the deeper levels of reduction to supply also then bring potential restrictions, mandatory restrictions in each of those sectors. But conservation, it just always has to be a part of any kind of conversation about how we manage our supplies. But we do have some others. And one of the big strategies and one that Central Arizona Project has been very centrally involved with is water banking. And what this means is taking supplies that we have available now, surface water supplies, again, Colorado River transported uphill over a long distance and put intentionally into these regional aquifers. The same attributes that make this area, the Phoenix General Metro area and some of the other parts of the central and southern Arizona productive pumping groundwater also make it suitable for recharge. So you can see the pictures here on the left of what looked like lakes. These are extremely leaky lakes. These are recharge basins where you add, in this case, CAP water. And it infiltrates and contributes back to the aquifer. The rate of infiltration is measured in feet per day. So it's actually sometimes hard to keep these big basins full. You keep putting water in and it's soaking through rubble, basically, gravel, sands. They're located in areas where the hydrogeology is favorable for that. The specific mechanism that we've been using, there's an institution, Secretary Arbelita, Alex, I mentioned this year, the Arizona Water Banking Authority, we'll get to it in a second, is one of the mechanisms. It's an institution that has helped support this activity. But individual cities and other entities have been doing the same activity to put water that we have now, before we get to these really deep reductions, put it back into our aquifers. It doesn't evaporate there. It can stay there and can be used later. That's water banking, kind of it's got lots of other complexity, of course. But that's one of the strategies we use. The Arizona Water Banking Authority has stored four million acre feet. The Arizona Water Banking Authority is, has stored four million acre feet of water in the aquifers of the central part of the state. There's an additional eight million acre feet that's been stored by other entities. And that's primarily cities, but some of the tribes have been doing the same thing. This has helped keep our water table from further decline. And it provides a backup supply, not a full backup supply. It's, it's meant as a supplemental supply, not a full replacement supply. This is how we can take again, some of the largest impacts of shortage and alleviate that. And it's part of the way that individual utilities, water utilities help manage their supplies. Combination of surface water delivered through the CAP, of course, there's in the Phoenix area, we've got SRP supplies available in some areas. But then using our aquifers to always retrieve groundwater that's been accumulated over eons, but also this water that's been stored. Last strategy I'll just touch on is really the kind of the bread and butter of a lot of what all the folks in front of you do, which is try to think about how to manage what we have. And, and that also implies it to individual utilities. As big as an important CAP and CAP water is to the vibrancy of central Arizona, it's not the only supply in the municipal sector. It's a, it's about 40%. No, some cities and some utilities are much more reliant on it and some not at all. But that diversity in, in state surface water, that's again mostly SRP groundwater. Affluent, that's a large resource that's increasingly being used as meeting some of the municipal demands, some of that for golf courses, but also there's pilot skill activity to directly use it for reuse, many mechanisms that way. And infrastructure, yes, of course, I work for an organization that has a big piece of infrastructure. So of course we think about that. But that also includes wells and interconnections among water providers. And some of these other strategies like exchanges. One city might have, you know, good groundwater capacity, but not much CAP allocation. Another one might have some affluent and some other supplies. Those kinds of working amongst themselves is really important. A lot of that already has happened. One of the things that has happened at the CAP in the last number of years is that we've now have more flexibility, regulatory flexibility to use our big aqueduct to help move some of these other supplies around. Kristin mentioned some of the new supplies that might come. If it's a exchange with Ocean D cell in Mexico, that's going to come through the CAP just like we would. But there's also some groundwater in western Arizona that can be pumped into the CAP and delivered here as a, as a supplemental supply. And those kinds of ways of taking additional supplies using our big piece of infrastructure plus the lateral canals and pipelines and interconnections. That's going to be much more of the kind of things you're going to be seeing at CAP, but also among individual water utilities. Managing what we have, sharing, coming up with innovative arrangements to make sure that we can keep our economy going, grow responsibly and keep that trillion dollar economy. So I'm going to pass it back to Alex. I just talked briefly about some of the things that are coming.
Actually, we're out of time for presentations. I'd like to open it up to questions. That's possible. First question from the audience? That's okay. Just stand up and talk, Bill. Three minutes.
I'm famous for talking too long. Just ask any of the council. First, I want to thank everybody on the council, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our wonderful guests. Some of that was really depressing. The rest was just terrifying. And you know, oh, I think, I think actually I have, I'm going to be the only person here with good news. As amazing as that could be, I have installed a rainwater harvesting system for my home. And what rainwater harvesting means is that the gutters on your house go into a tank. I actually have two of them, a couple outbuildings. I have a total of 4,900 square feet under roof. So that takes in your garage, your patio covers, everything like that. And that system that I have, if we get eight inches of rain, will collect 24,422 gallons of water. I like gallons better than acre feet. You can do the math. Now, the average, to get you a feel for that, the average, we use about 8,000 gallons a month per individual consumer. So I have three months of water there for free. Well, the tanks cost money. But I didn't have to use any electricity. We didn't have to take the water out of, out of the lake or pump it up 3,000 feet or any of those things. What I understand is 30 to 70% of the water that we use is used outside of the house. Now, welcome to Cave Creek. The horses outnumber the people here. And I can understand conservation, but I'm not sure the horses are going to understand that. They're going to want to drink and people are going to want to keep their swimming pool filled. And they've spent tens of thousands of dollars here on landscaping that they want to keep irrigated. And so they're going to want to have a way to continue that lifestyle. And I'm terrified here. I like electricity. And we could have a problem with that. And I like food. Okay. And we could have a problem with that. And I really like water. I haven't found a way to live without it. So this maybe is a way that we can make Sean's life a little better here. And it's something that we can do right now. And it's, it is bone jarringly simple. It doesn't take any electricity. Gravity does all of the work. All of the materials, everything needs available. If we look, and you mentioned Israel and desalinization. Give me just one more part here. In Australia, at least 24% of the houses there have water tanks to do this. 42% of the people in Australia prefer drinking rainwater to mains water, to treated water. They probably have a better digestive system than I do. I'm not trying that. I'm just saying we could use it outside. But if we look at what other countries do, they think we're crazy when we flush our toilets with treated water. They don't do that. So there is something we can do, which will help all of you. You guys I see as big W water. And what I'm talking about is little W water, what happens at my house. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Other questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
So there are relatively distinct sub-basins and, and there is some lateral flow among some of those aquifers. It's, in the map and you can see in the presentation there, the depth of groundwater, depth of bedrock varies across the region for sure. Much of the water that's in our aquifers is fossil water. It was accumulated literally over tens of thousands of years and wetter climates in a like part of the place to see. When they're at their full state, you do actually get more supply across those groundwater basin divides. But many of them are essentially isolated. So there's not, there's a small fraction that would go from one sub-basin to another.
Follow up question on that. How much volume has been lost over the years since the 60s?
Well, so the, most of the silt is captured in, in the Colorado River system at a large scale in like Powell. Because it's receiving that variability is attenuated, comes into Lake Powell. There has been low, less than 10, I'd say probably a few million acre feet that has been lost in capacity. But that capacity, much of that would have been below Deadpool. So you, you don't necessarily lose the, you may lose the total volume of capacity, but it's below where you would be able to take that. Reservoirs do accumulate sediment. This is an issue actually on the Salt River Project in, in Bartlett. What's that? Right. So sediment capture is part of the design of a, of a dam. It's, it's a long-term concern on any dam. It's not a significant reduction in our operating capacity in the Colorado River system. One, one other just general thing, Lake Powell and Lake Mead are enormous. And that is hugely beneficial. We have depleted our savings account and some of that we could have managed a little bit better if we knew how long we were going to be suffering low runoff. But the fact that we have been able to only this year have a declared shortage is in large part because of the size of those reservoirs. Which is really be a reflection of the flashiness of the Colorado Rivers. That aside, the increased variability we're expecting to see with climate change, the natural Colorado River system has been highly variable. And so the magnitude of those two reservoirs, along with some of the smaller ones, has given us this great ability to manage that variability. But we have over allocated.
Any other questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Recharging, as, as time has progressed, there's been a lot of talk about water that wasn't there. Over allocation has been there for decades. But then, you know, there's been recent talk about any help for evaporation in the Colorado River system. I haven't seen anything talking about, once we put the water in the ground, how much can we get back out? I know the aquifers have been there, as we say, they're in the fossil base, they're there for eons. So there's some retention gate really. But has there been any studies talking about what we can actually get back out?
It's a great question and I'll answer it in sort of two different ways. If you're trying to retrieve the actual molecules of water that you stored, it's a, it's a fraction of that to be able to get it straight out of that. The way we actually manage our aquifers, again, we're in a really favorable position in central and southern Arizona with these aquifers is more of a mass balance way that we're accounting for the water that's added to the aquifer through recharge. It's, it's there. It didn't go anywhere. It migrates within, within the water table. But the pumping that we're accounting for in that recovery is essentially an offset involved. It's not trying to get that specific mound of Colorado River water that was put in the ground. Those, so if we're trying to, and just one other connection point. The Kristin mentioned that the goal of the Phoenix AMA is safe yield, safe yield. Sure. Sorry about that. The goal for this active management area is safe yield in average, long-term in and out of the aquifer in balance. And that's an accounting balance. It's real. That water that we've been recharging has really contributed to the aquifer. And the amount that we pump is all measured. So both of those things are measured and those are accounted for. But if you're thinking about, well, can I get that specific volume that was contributed? It's not exactly that way. It's, it's mass balanced to the aquifer system as well.
And we're not in safe field.
I believe we have one question online. Did you tell me that Teresa? I thought you said you did. We did.
No, we have two more.
We have two more on the last item. Two more on the last item. Got it. Any other questions from the audience for the CAP reps? Yes.
What exactly is safe yield?
So in this context, safe yield has a legal definition, which is a long-term average between the amount of water that is pumped and the amount that is naturally and artificially contributed to the aquifers. So there is actually, you know, there are some recharge naturally occurring recharge in the mountain fronts. And when we get flows in our otherwise dry riverbeds that there's a significant portion of that actually does ultimately re contribute to the aquifer. But it's defined among the, in the legal context, this concept is over this entire active management area. Now that does include many sub-basins and smaller areas. So it's a, that is not in balance. So the first goal is to try to get in an overall balance. And then the refined approach is to try to get it more localized so that you don't have localized groundwater level declines. But when the, the first probably has, and this goes all the way back to late 1970s and final appropriations for the CAP is we've got to get our house in order in terms of getting into overall balance. And that's the legal, just the management goal for this active management area is defined as that balance between, long-term balance between pumping and natural and artificial recharge.
Can I just quickly add? In case you don't remember everything that we are saying tonight, there are some really great resources. I think the Department of Water Resources has a great website. They have maps of the groundwater basins and sub-basins. They have information about safe yields and all of this. And that's azwater.gov, right? And, and then CAP, we have centralarizonaproject.com and we have all kinds of information about the shortage and CAP system. And then we have, we also manage a website called knowyourwaternews.com. And I love that one because we have all these two-page fact sheets with great graphics and they're kind of executive summaries. So they give you on whatever topic you have a question about, they give you a short summary about it. So I just encourage you, if you have more questions after, or you can't remember something, to go to those, those resources.
If there aren't any more questions, thank you Ken. Thank you Alexandra very much. Eric Bunch is on his way out the door, but he'd like to give his regards.
I want a couple of people to thank here. One of them, Catherine, our council member Roy A. For putting this together for us. I really appreciate it. I'm sorry I got a bug out, but I know what these folks are going to say because we've, I've heard them before. But thank y'all for, for coming and doing, helping educate us on what's actually going on with the water in the Southwest. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Our next and final segment, and I'm going to offer this to our previous three speakers. If you need to leave, you can feel free to do so. I know it's a work night. You have to go back to work in the morning. But if, if you're willing to stay for the last 45 minutes, we'd appreciate it. Okay, that said, our final segment is with the town of Cave Creek. Professionals who manage our water utilities here. And those two people who are speaking tonight, first is Sean Cruz Weisner. Sean has been with the town of Cave Creek as our utility director since April of 2019. In this critical role, Sean leads and oversees water and wastewater operations, which include the treatment and booster sites and distribution systems for both Cave Creek and Desert Hills communities. In addition to being responsible for the management, maintenance and repair of our utility enterprise, Mr. Cruz Weisner and his team ensure that our system complies with all federal, state and local regulations. Sean earned his bachelor's degree in civil engineering from McMaster University in Hamilton, Ontario, Canada, and a master's of public administration from Grand Canyon University. Thank you, Sean. And I'll get quickly to Michelle Van Quatham. Michelle is a Western Water and Natural Resources attorney in Phoenix. Ms. Van Quatham practices in the water, energy, mining, natural resources, real estate and environmental law areas. Michelle assists businesses, property owners and water districts evaluate, buy, sell, permit, protect, treat, discharge and store water and wastewater and manage other natural resources. Ms. Van Quatham is Cave Creek's external water counselor. Thank you, Michelle and Sean.
Well, thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. And this is a very important topic for the town. I'm going to try and bring this down to the level of how does this impact the town and the town's resources? You know, the numbers you're going to see in my presentation are a desk surrounding place for what CAP and ADWR deal with, but they're, they're important for us. And it's important for our customers. So I want to start with just a general overview of the system. We run two water systems. So in total, we have just under 5,000 accounts. And this is a And this is a graphic that shows the two connected water systems, the Cave Creek Water System and the Desert Hills Water System. I don't want to spend too much time on this, I'm going to actually get into a little more detail on each of the systems. So this is the Cave Creek system itself. We have 2,942 accounts in the system right now. And as you can see, we actually extend outside our municipal limits. So I know we have some people here from Carefree. There is a settlement agreement and Carefree is now taking over a total of 550 customers. That process has physically started, so that is going to lower our count down by another 550 from the 2,900 I just mentioned. And then we actually have an interconnect with the Desert Hill system. That was actually constructed when they were a private water system. So Water Services in Cave Creek started in 1955. And one of the challenges for the Cave Creek system is we talked about, you know, the delivery of CAP water from the Colorado River to the municipal providers and customers, where they have to pump that water 3,000 feet in elevation. Well, we actually have to pump it 12 miles up the Cave Creek Road from the Cap Canal up 600 feet in elevation to get to town. So that's actually how our major water supply right now is actually, it's the only water supply for the town. When the water company started, it actually had a number of wells. But the water company, it's a private Cave Creek Water Company, made the decision to go to surface water, partly because of the yield of those wells and some water quality issues. So as the town's been operating a system since 2007, it's been running on Central Arizona Project treated water. Some of the challenges that we have are just the nature of the system. If you look at it from a linear standpoint, for 3,000 accounts, 200, 3,000 accounts, it's a very large spread out system. So we have a lot of dead end lines, we also have a lot of elevation. So we have a lot of booster stations that we have to manage to move that water around the system. So this graphic shows you the Desert Hill system, currently just over 1,800 customers in that Desert Hill system. That system started in 1970 and it was started as a groundwater system. Right now, we have three active wells. The yield on that, and we'll talk about this later, has actually been dropping. So the system has been reliant on the interconnect site at 24th Street and Cloud Road to actually make up the bulk of the water, since the town's actually taken over operations in 2006, '07 timeframe. Typically, we'd have to provide at least half the water in the last couple of years because of reductions in the groundwater table and the yield that we're able to pump those wells. That's gone up to about two-thirds in the last two years. So we're hoping to try and balance that down. But in reality, we don't think there's much groundwater available underneath that area, provide the connections. I'm going to do a quick public service announcement. We are doing utility rates study right now. We had a work session with our council yesterday. We're looking to adjust the rates for both the Cave Creek water customers, the Cave Creek wastewater customers, as well as the Desert Hills customers. We have to make increases to pay for operation and maintenance, for repair costs and future capital costs to pay for this and to meet our financial requirements on reserves for the systems and debt service coverage. That's very important because the major project we have moving forward is actually interconnect with the city of Phoenix. We're not wholesaling water from Phoenix. Phoenix will treat and deliver a portion of the town's Central Arizona Project, but we need to make the facility to receive that water, get it into our system. So we were looking to kick a loan out, it's a very expensive project, over $9 million. And we need to have, make sure we have the debt service coverage to make that happen. So let's bring that forward to you. The last time the town did an evaluation of our rates was actually two years ago. At that time, we weren't sure what was happening with the disconnect with the Carefree customers. Since that has been settled, this actually rate study is in accounting for that loss in revenue of that 550 customers. So that's something we have to factor into it also. So I look, right now, there was a work session with council yesterday. There was one a few weeks earlier. And the next check-in with council was actually September 19th. So next Monday, it's just going to be the notice of intent. So there's not going to be much information, but that sets a statutory timeframe. So at that point, we have 60 days to do a public hearing. We're actually are going to get the final report out. We got some feedback yesterday from council making some modifications. But we're, I'd like to just point out that we're going to do some outreach and just keep looking for that. And we're welcome feedback from our customers on that. We're looking to put the rates in place by January. And that's also for utility rates as well as capacity fees. Those are the fees that are charged to do connections to the system. So let me start by talking about water resources. So the town does, it's mentioned, we have a central Arizona project, municipal and industrial allocation. 2,228 acre feet is what we have after we account for and the transfer to Carefree is about to occur. It's actually, we have the subcontract, it's being finalized, it's 386 acre feet to be moved, or 378 acre feet. So we do have existing groundwater wells and we've actually been trying to study those wells. There's about 12 well sites that we have and we've been looking at those. So as part of balancing out and making a more reliable water supply, we're looking at all potential water supplies to the system. We've had those wells looked at. We actually, the next step is actually pulling a few, we've pulled a few wells. We've done some videos of them to verify if the casing is solid. Because they've been inoperable for so long, we have to do some work to clean them before we can do the next step, which is doing some drawdown testing. But we'll continue to work on that to make sure that we have reliable water supplies and something as we can at least see if groundwater is actually something we could use moving forward. But right now, the town's water supply is wholly dependent on CAP, treated Central Arizona Project water. In Desert Hills, I mentioned, there's three wells. The wells are providing about a third of the water supplies out there. So the Desert Hill system is reliant on the Cave Creek system and the treatment of Central Arizona Project water and delivery of that to Desert Hills. We actually recently did complete a subcontract for non-eating agricultural water for Desert Hills. Ironically, this is the first year that we have that available to us. And next year, there's going to be a cut to that water because it's a lower priority. But it is a lot, when you think about water resources, you have to think long-term. So the fact that we have that contract in place means that now we have a renewable water supply for Desert Hills that Desert Hills never had before. It's also one of the driving factors for the rate increases that's necessary for their Desert Hills customers because you have to pay the cost of that water. There's an existing debt services that had to be paid for us to actually finalize that contract. And when we talk about the interconnect between the Desert Hill system, another thing is when the town took over the system, there was actually, one of the wells had a water quality issue, which is high arsenic water. So that water actually is being blended with Cave Creek water. So that's actually something we want to look at moving forward to see if that's something we want to separate. Let me slide to make it in. So we'll talk quickly about water obligations, it's not on this slide. I apologize for that. You'll hear sometimes we refer to certificates of assured water supply. It was talked about when a new development, new subdivision comes in, it actually has to have, prove out 100 years worth of water supply. That is done by a certificate of assured water supply. So that's actually something we've been working on. It's an obligation for the town and not all of the certificates have actually been constructed. So we re-believe we have 750 acre feet of our CAP water supplies, which are tied up in certificates of assured water supply. 268 additional acre feet, 69 acre feet are actually certificates that actually fall within Carefree. So we're actually talking with the separation of the system. We're actually having a discussion with Arizona Department of Water Resources staff to make sure we have the accounting correct. There's some other numbers that have been thrown out for the number of certificates. We've actually worked with staff and mapped it down to a parcel level. We trust our numbers and we've actually had some meetings with ADWR staff and they're looking at our numbers. Hopefully they agree with it. But we're also looking to make sure that when with separations of the systems, that the certificates that fall within the Cave Creek municipal boundary get accounted for with Cave Creek municipal boundary. It's just a technicality, but something we want to account for moving forward. So overall on deliveries, of the 2,900 customers in the Cave Creek system, we had just over 1,400 acre feet of cap water delivery. About 300 of that actually went to the Cave Creek customers. When I talk about Carefree customers, those are the 550 accounts that currently are connected to the system. There's been about 50 accounts being converted over and that process is moving forward. But about 300 acre feet of that, 1,300 was actually to those customers that will be moving over to the Cave Creek or Carefree water system as well as the water resources. We also did a delivery of raw water to the Ranch Manana Golf Course. That 234 acre feet is actually made up of water. That there's some of that is wall water, we delivered up our pipeline all the way to the golf course and we charged them for that. And some of that is actually processed water. As you treat water to a water treatment plant, you actually have some wastewater, you have some backwash water that's generated. So we send that backwash water to the golf course. In addition to that water, the Ranch Manana Golf Course also gets the town's wastewater effluent. The way the system was built and constructed, that's the delivery point for it. So moving forward, we actually want to look at other options to help balance that out. And I have a slide in a little bit that will show you some of the issues. Bring up the Ranch Manana Golf Course because that's our largest single user besides the water that we transfer to the Desert Hills water system. So it's something critical for us to understand and to best manage for the town's resources. Of the, you've seen this before, of the 1,800 customers in Desert Hills, about 207 acre feet came from groundwater wells and only 563, or 563 acre feet had to get transferred from Cave Creek to Desert Hills to make up the water demand out there. So this is showing graphically, and it's just only showing the cave creek water deliveries. And when I point this up here, I want to show that teal piece of the pie at the top. So we have the Cave Creek customers. And in this slide, actually, moving forward, because in the near future, we'll have lost the Carefree customers. I'm accounting for 2,228 acre feet, which is the town's municipal industrial water supplies. And the allocation as of last year, looking at building records of what we use. So 46% of that went to feet to supplying Cave Creek customers. For 24 of that percent of that actually went to supplying water to Desert Hills to help supplement that system. Eight, 11% went to the deliveries to the Ranch Manana Golf Course. And we still had on top of that 19% of our CAP municipal industrial supplies we're trying to use. That's important moving forward because when we start talking about shortages, this is the higher priority pool that we have available. But in the past, the town hasn't had an ability to do anything with this water. So if you're not familiar with how the Central Arizona Project works, is that we pay the capital cost on all of the CAP water that the town has a subcontract for. And then we pay per acre foot for the water that gets delivered to us. So as we haven't used a portion of the water, it actually goes by the canal. CAP then allocates it to potentially other users, but we're still paying the capital cost on that. So moving forward is something we've been working on is actually a way to recharge that water and actually generate storage credits for the town, which allows us to again, to diversify our water portfolio and then can look out in the future of them when it starts recharging the ground and then pulling together a process to withdraw it. But I bring that up because again, we're not using all of the town's CAP allocation. So as we start talking about tiered reductions, that's something we have to factor into. Right now, you know, while it's been, some of the conversation has been pretty dire looking right now about what, where the levels are because we're not all fully allocated, I think the town can weather this, all this, I'll put that out there. But we have to be judicious about what we're doing with our water resources, look at ways to conserve our water. So with the current reductions, I think it was 21% total, 592,000 acre feet of water. Most of that's going to be hitting the agricultural pools. So because we're not using all of us, all of our water, that doesn't mean that we're flush with water. That means we still have to conserve as much as we can, but looking forward, but we don't have a direct impact to us right now. So there's no immediate impacts to us. We do expect, as pointed out, that next year, we do have the non-eating agricultural water that we've got a subcontract with for Desert Hills, that we won't be able to get all that water, but we still have to pay the back capital charges moving forward. So that factors into the need to get additional rates. So we do forecast as the Cave Creek municipal water provider, that there will be further reductions. So we're looking at ways to diversify and to best conserve our water resources. So we want to work with the customers to look at lowering water resources. Michelle will talk later about what we're doing with the drought management plan. Part of that is education, doing outreach, things like this work session. We're trying to work on the town's metering system, again, bring it down to a specific customer level. So customers can get information more quickly from us if they have a leak, so they can look at it more information out to customers and how they can look at conserving water. In reality, the town actually, although we have some high water users, most of our water users are actually what I would consider more conservative. But we do get cases where people, you know, we have winter visitors who come and in the summertime, they have someone watching their home, but they don't know about a water leak until the next month. So if we can get better and tighter on our billing information, we can tell them about a water leak in advance. And I've seen water leaks of a quarter million gallons go through a meter. It's horrendous and it's not a nice conversation to have with a customer, but I'd rather tell about that customer as early as I can to stop that water. And it also helps reduce the amount of water that we're losing in the system. We actually bill them for that, but we have to deal with it, but I'd rather not bill them for it sadly. I mentioned about storage recharge credits. What that means is up till last year, the town didn't actually have a permit with Arizona Department of Water Resources to store any of our water. So it was a two-step process, we actually had to get a permit to store it somewhere. We had to have permits to put it somewhere. So we actually, a few years ago, Cary Direct Town Manager was able to come up with an agreement with the city of Phoenix that gave us an opportunity to use three ARS injection wells with the city of Phoenix that they could recharge on our behalf. In addition to that, last year, while we were working with ADWR and getting the long-term storage account put in place, we actually worked with Central Arizona Project. So now we have access to the two of the recharge facilities that actually showed up in the slides earlier for the Ken showed. So that allows us now to put, it gives us an opportunity to have a savings account and all the mechanisms are put in place for us to recharge water. So as of this year, we'll have about 600 acre feet in stored long-term storage credits for the town for the first time. So that's a great addition to help diversify our water pool moving forward. The town ourselves, we're actually looking at opportunities to recharge. There is an imbalance with our deliveries to the Ranch Manana Golf Course, largely because we can, right now, we can only send all of our treated effluent from our wastewater facility can only go to the golf course. So if they don't need it, it effectively overflows their system, which is not efficient. So we're looking at that moving forward so we can recapture some of that water. And we've talked about recharge and what does that look like? It's really ways of getting water back into the groundwater aquifer. This slide shows a couple of different mechanisms. You can use shallow wells that then drop the water in and it uses the sand interface get down. You can use recharge basins, which is what the picture that Ken showed of the CAP facilities, you can do in-stream. On the far right is what the recharge wells that go directly into the aquifer that you can directly inject into the aquifer and withdraw. Those are ARS wells, that's actually what City of Phoenix has, has allowed us access to. So now we have options for the town, which is the main thing. And quickly, I talked about Ranch Manana, mentioned several times. Sorry. The Ranch Manana Golf Course, this is actually the delivery. If you've been up there and played, it's a nice facility. The lakes at the top end are actually where we deliver water to. So we have a pipeline that goes from our wastewater treatment plant and we have a pipeline that comes up from our, the backwash water, the unused water from the water treatment plant process. So the main issue that we have with this system is that when we actually have the most affluent waters, actually in the winter, when we have our winter visitors here, but that's when they have the least demand for the system. So we've, we measured this system overall, we deliver just under 500 acre feet to them. They use about 300 acre feet for their onsite irrigation of the 200 acre feet that is wasted. There's some of that is evaporation, we think some of it is leaking through their lake system. But a portion of it, about 72 acre feet a year, fair amount of water for us, is actually overflowing this system. So if we can get a handle on that, that it can be a resource now for the town and that's an annual resource. So it's something we want to work towards. So now I've talked about a lot of the infrastructure side, I'm going to pass it off to Michelle. She's going to talk about the town's water policies and so our drought management planning moving forward.
You, Sean. So the town started a water policy in 2017 or continued it perhaps, but it was a great first step in sort of reducing the uncontrolled development potential that could take water resources very quickly in the town. And over the years, that was effective because I had some developer clients that were stopped by it. But there were also some places in the policy that weren't so great. So the town revisited the policy and updated it in 2021. It was approved in December. And it really, the two big changes that it made was it created volumetric limits for new connections. So they can't just get a meter and pump all day and put it in a big storage tank, which was some people were kind of doing. And the second thing it did was it really changed the ability to get water service outside of the town limits. So the Desert Hills area, as you heard, is not in a good situation. The town had some hydrogeologists take a look and see if there was a way to sustainably still develop out there with the water resources that that area has and it clearly was not. So the policy was changed so that there will be no new connections in the Desert Hills area unless the town has a contractual or statutory obligation. And this is, and it's a hard stop. There is the ability, if somebody's got a subdivision out there that they, if they were to bring new water to the town, that would... that, that would be provided to those people, they could do it, but it's a, it's a hard stop for the, uh, new connections in that area if they weren't already under contract. So that's the big change it made. In addition, we also made some upgrades to the town ordinances that do apply both inside and outside town, outside through the policy and in, inside the town by ordinance that cleaned up some loopholes, you want to call them, or, or things that were being, um, used in a way that were not intended. The, the, um, they were tweaks, I would say, for instance, manifold meters. People were gaming the water resources a little bit by putting meters and manifold arrangements. So now that you can't do that and you engineer wannabes will understand that. But it's, I, I, uh, don't want to have to explain manifolds tonight. Thank you. I didn't do well in that class. Um, but it limits new residential and non-residential connections to half an acre foot a year, which for most residences is plenty, but it's conservative. And for instance, commercial users may have a big deal, uh, a great deal more use than that. So it's going to possibly require some significant changes to their potential operations. It also though allows, uh, for multifamily development at point three acre feet per year. So that's still a doable thing and would, would help if that type of, uh, family housing is needed. There are, um, reasons for these changes and primarily to protect existing customers because existing customers need to make sure that they have a water supply as we've been talking about. Um, but it does provide, the new ordinance also provides the town the ability to weigh larger water users um, that come into the town. And if, if it won't hurt existing customers in their judgment, and it provides a substantial benefit to the town. So if there's a new employer, they can, um, change those limits under the town code. It also clarifies, uh, we did a tweet to clarify that will serve letters, which is something that a developer gets to determine if the town's willing to serve at the point they're asked. Um, those are not contracts for service because there are a lot of those floating around. And all they, all they were, were, you know, examination of the system and looking to see if there's enough, uh, pipe there and that sort of thing. And, and so those are clarified to be interpreted as not contracts, as they were never intended to be contracts. And they have lots of things, things that a developer still needs to do in them. Um, it also makes the one hundred year assured water supply requirement apply to all subdivisions. And those are defined in town code as four parcels or, or more. And so anybody that wants to lot split, um, would be caught in having to make that demonstration at four lots. Um, it also gives the town a clearer ability to clean up old meters. There are a lot of old meters for variety of reasons out in the town that are just sitting there and they're not active accounts. So the town has a process now to go and see if the, the person wants to make them active. If they don't, they have the ability under the town code now to take them out after a certain period of time. And if those people have their meters taken out, then they don't necessarily get a new one. They'd have to go under whatever laws in effect at the time that the new meter is requested. Um, so those are some, some teeth that we put into the town water policy. The, um, next slide, and I'm sorry, I missed. This was the, what I was explaining, um, is the drought management plan. And that is something you'll be seeing on city council agenda. So please watch and come and provide input if you would like. Um, the town had a drought management plan, of course, but it's been, um, more important these days to, to look at that again. And so we're looking really holistically at it. We've had lots of back and forth, and I'm really very excited about what we've come up with. It really looks at Cave Creek specifically, and it says, you know, if you're not in a problem, maybe you don't need severe conservation. Like now, you're going to have potentially a shortage in the system next year, but the town probably won't have a shortage. So at that stage, you know, we, we were outlining some steps that we can take, including public education, things like that. And then in the different stages, we're looking at how much is the town really going to be cut? And how much do we think we're going to need to do to get people really to cut back voluntarily at first? And then there'll be a point where human health and safety kicks in, and we're going to have to have more restrictions that are potentially enforceable. So it starts with education, uh, grants. They're going to try to look at smart meters that will help people really, you know, get on your app and see how much water you're using when something happens, so that you can have more control over your own water use. Spot leaks from Sean's desk. So we are going to work on those types of things. Uh, harness technology. Um, there's also going to be potentially, something might be presented to the council still. They haven't authorized any of this yet, by the way. But we're going to present things like potentially at those bigger, bigger, more serious levels of cuts, surcharges on the higher water use, so that we're incentivizing people not to buy the more expensive, bigger water. Um, the, the town's water rates are already tiered, which encourages conservation. But that, we could add some teeth to those potentially to encourage further conservation if it's absolutely necessary. The town has some housekeeping things that will do for its own water use, which is very small. But Cave Creek is really unique because, uh, I think it was eighty-eight percent of your water use is residential. And frankly, you don't have a huge amount of outdoor water use either, because a lot of your landscaping is very desert-y. And so there's going to be a need to really tailor the drought management to your community more so than some of the bigger cities where they do things like take lawns out. You know, that won't necessarily help in Cave Creek because there aren't a lot of ones to begin with. So we're looking at all of those things and trying to craft a plan that we think will be both acceptable to the public and mostly enforced voluntarily. And, and, you know, in ways that you have control over how you reduce your water.
Very good. We are running a little bit, uh, tight on time, but of course, we want to have some questions from the audience for Sean and Michelle. Anybody?
Yep. Oh, lots of them. We have two.
And we have two, but we'll start with the audience. Um, Cynthia.
Thank you for your presentation. Very good information. My question is about, uh, for Cave Creek and our surrounding area and use of groundwater private wells, which the town doesn't manage. Uh, what information comes from the Arizona Department of Water Resources with respect to the number of, uh, private wells? And, uh, I know there are some jurisdictions that do monitor private wells. Maybe not charging for their use yet, but certainly looking at the volume of use.
Well, I'll start it. Um, yeah, so there are a number of customers, uh, within our Cape Creek residents that are not on the connect, connected to the water system. Or even there's some that actually have a well and are connected to the water system. We ask them to have a backflow preventer to prevent cross-contamination. But they actually fall under some of the rules with Arizona Apartment Water Resources. They're called an exempt well. I believe it's under thirty-five gallons a minute and a certain volume per year of usage. In the Groundwater Management Act, they were authorized to have that. That was actually something that was put in place to, to prevent, to allow property owners to have a well. Um, so, uh, there's actually a registry of it. Arizona Apartment Water Resources says keep that. There's actually a map you can go to. Um, uh, it's pretty precise. I think it goes down to like a ten acre parcel level, upper precision what they do. Um, and provides good information. I don't think they have to do annual reporting on the usage though. And, uh, well, we found out when we looked at it, it wasn't so bad in, in Cave Creek, but when you look at Desert Hills and you look at all the wells and desert hills that are surrounding it. And we have three, uh, production wells out there. They're, they're basically, we're fighting for the same water out there. So it is a struggle for us. And that's something we want to look for as we have discussions on, you know, are the town's existing wells viable moving forward? You know, what is water quality? Uh, could we potentially, uh, have an impact on the neighboring walls in those speech areas? So something, I'm sure if you want.
Yes, state law really does allow people still to have exempt wells, but there are some requirements for new exempt wells that may prohibit somebody from putting a new one in. Like if you're close enough to a water provider's pipe, they may need to somehow deny you service in order to put in a new well, but it's, it's a little loose, but that is the way that the law is. And the local jurisdictions don't regulate wells.
Okay, good. I, I do have questions from, that were prepared from Melissa Cathar.
Oh, I wanted to ask about, um, I'm at the end of the line. And there's always a fire hydrant close. Um, I know that this city is flushing water once a month out there. Why is my water supply safe being somewhere there?
Yeah. So the question we had is, um, it happens to be one area of the system, um, and actually we have several areas, uh, where there's, um, we actually have what called auto flushers. Uh, we've connected them to fire hydrants. In some cases, we've done other connections to them. Um, part of the problem with the Cave Creek system is because it is such a diverse, long, long dead-in lines. In that case, the one up on Fleming Springs Road is actually a dead-end areas. We actually, if we didn't flush the water, move the water through the pipes, we'd have a water quality issue. So we do have to balance that. It's actually something we track. We work with our staff on. We actually do monitoring the system to, to, uh, look at, uh, things like chlorine residuals and, and other samples. And we've, we have a, a program to flush the system to keep fresh water into it. So we are looking at how to optimize that. We're looking at other mechanisms to do things like, uh, more aggressive scouring of the pipes to remove any water pipe will have a, a biofilm. It doesn't sound good, but actually will happen to any water, uh, pipe. If we can flush it out more aggressively, then it might, um, not degrade as quickly. And we're looking at other things to look at that. But it's actually something, if you've ever seen me do the, one of the quarterly reports, we report on that every quarter to the town council, our flushing operations. But, uh, it's just the nature of, of the system, um, up in Fleming Springs, uh, there's a limited number of connections. And we have a lot of users that actually are not there and there's very limited use in the summertime when we actually have the, the issues with, uh, water temperatures and things that we have to struggle with. So it is a balancing act for the town that we have to balance, uh, both conservation. At the same time, we have to, uh, make sure that we're meeting all regulations with the water and that meets all regulations.
Okay, thank you. Susan Clancy.
And I will give a copy to you, to you. It's an article from twenty eighteen. And it gives an idea of how we can ensure a steady supply of water in Arizona. His proposal is to put in a six-foot diameter pipe or two four-footers into the Snake River just outside Lewiston, Indiana. Run the pipeline to Lake Mead to refill the lake twenty-four and seven. The distance to be covered is just over nine hundred miles and would travel ninety percent government land. The route would run down western Idaho into eastern Nevada, all the way to the lake. There are no mountain ranges to cover. There are no major rivers to cross. There's a route down Nevada is almost flat. So it may need some pumping stations, the environment issues, and the rights of way should be waived by the states and the federal government for a national emergency. And we are all, and we only ship water so that, uh, what harm can that do? There are Indian lands to cross, give them some of the water, and the location on the Snake River is just before it enters into the Columbia. So it's a, a concept. I think it has a lot of merit. Uh, this was done in twenty eighteen.
Would anybody like to comment on that? Ken?
Again, as a, as somebody who works for an organization that has a big piece of infrastructure that moves water uphill over long periods of time, uh, long distances. I guess I just, um, there are, there are interesting ideas. There's lots of ideas that have been kicked around for a long time, infrastructure. And I think this would be a common theme, um, takes a lot of time and it's extremely difficult for many of the reasons that were cited, environmental issues and public support and those kinds of things, financial issues. Um, I think, uh, when we started talking about some of the more, uh, near, near term, but still for pretty far out augmentation options like ocean decel and things that are actually within the existing plumbing in many cases or could be within the existing plumbing of the Colorado River system, those appear to be more viable. Um, but, uh, really I'll just reemphasize a, a point. It's a kind of an all above strategy in terms of looking both in terms of supplementing the supplies and managing what we have. And, uh, the question about the kinds of things you can do with agriculture, again, that's one of the, it's the predominant user. Technology improvements in efficiency, cropping changes. There's, the system can be managed. It's not insurmountable, but it does take money, time, cooperation and, uh, and effort.
Okay. Lisa.
My question has to do with the Desert Hills, um, system. And just briefly, how do we get connected to them? And is that a good thing that we work together with that?
The connection actually happened, um, in nineteen nineties, uh, when they were both private water companies, both the Cape Creek Water Company was operated by, uh, uh, the George family and then, uh, Desert Hills was, was being run privately. So they made it as an emergency connection. Uh, so they both, both companies got together. They actually went through Corporation Commission and they extended pipelines, both directions to Twenty-Four Street and made the interconnect site. So, um, uh, it's right now, because there are water customers, I would say it is necessary because I got to get water to those pipes to, to support those customers. We are looking at ways to optimize the useful wells when the well production is going down. We're looking at other things that we can do. But that's one of the reasons that drove us to the, the twenty twenty water resource policy was, you know, uh, there in Maricopa County, the Desert Hill system falls within Maricopa County. We can't control development in Maricopa County. We can control, we found out, uh, because if there's, unless there's a contractual obligation, we don't have to provide customer, new customers. So we, at least with the water policy said, at least we'll stop, we'll, we'll deal with anybody that has contractual obligations, which has greatly reduced the number of connections that are occurring out there. Um, but yeah, from a, from a water provider standpoint, it, it's necessary because I need to make sure I can provide water to those customers. We're trying to optimize that and see what else we can do. One of the reasons the town, uh, uh, we started actually a number of years ago with the, um, trying to get the non-needling agricultural water application. Actually started in twenty thirteen. Um, and it was for to support Desert Hills because Desert Hills doesn't have a, a renewable water supply. So because we have that subcontract in place, we have the connection of the systems. With the rate study, we're actually looking at coming up with a wheeling rate. So we'll have one rate for Desert Hills. If, if they use theirs or we're treating and delivering their CAP water, which they paid for, we have one rate. If they have to use the town's municipal industrial water supplies, they'll get another rate. So we're, we're trying to correct the course, but it's hard because we have to make sure we can keep water going to the customers.
Other question.
Can I add something to that? At the time the town acquired Desert Hills Water Company, it was actually before the town acquired Cape Creek Water Company. There was an eight-inch aluminum line that ran to the American Water Company, which was located in Anthem. At the time the town made the decision, the idea was it would give us a diversification of sources of water. You could pull water from the American Water Company. Yes, I have the notes and I will provide you with that. So it was widely appreciated at the time that it was a good preemptive move from doing that at the time. However, the Corporation Commission decided American Water Company would not be authorized to do that, and they forced a discount. And that is how we ended up in this situation.
Other questions?
That's mine. I'd like to see how much water is being flushed out. How much water are we losing?
That's, afterwards I can get with you. We, we do do, we actually account for that monthly basis. We wrap that up into our quarterly reports. So, uh, I can, we, we pull the records for you. Yeah. We have a few stations that we have to do that in the system. But again, we're looking at other opportunities to, uh, keep the water. Again, it's mainly, the flushing is mainly to keep the water compliance that's safe. And that's where driven to, to do that, but I, we can pull the records on that.
Very good. I think we have to call our water form to a close. Okay.
Are the pumps now, the three pumps going to, um, Phoenix? The water is, are they in, I mean, are they out of the ground and now safe?
Uh, are you referring to the, uh, the City of Phoenix interconnect site? No, we're actually just in the design phase still. Uh, we're just, yeah, we're just getting to about fifty percent design documents on that. And we're going to start the contractor selection on that. So, uh, part of it is also we need to get the funding in place. Uh, without the rate increase, we actually can't get the loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority right now because we want to have that service coverage. So there's a bunch of moving parts. And, uh, so I'm anticipating it probably about eighteen months before the physical construction's done, which is about the same timeframe, a little bit, a few months behind when City of Phoenix has their infrastructure completed. Currently, City of Phoenix can't provide the water to us. They have to do a pipeline project in Cave Creek Road and they have to complete an upgrade to a booster pump station before they can get us online.
On behalf of the mayor and town council of Cave Creek, I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. I hope this was beneficial to you. I'm especially grateful to our five speakers, Kristin Johnson, Alexandra Arbola, Ken Seasholes, Michelle Van Quatham and Sean Cruzenwesner. We are very grateful to these people for carrying the weight of protecting our water supplies on their shoulders. If there are any other questions, I move to adjourn.
Catherine, thank you.
Catherine, thank you very much for organizing this.
Thank you.